Good evening and welcome to the October 28th Board Meeting. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off your wireless communication devices to avoid any technical interference with the microphones and taping of the minute, me, of the meeting. A Spanish call-in line for the community to call to hear the meeting interpreted live has been established. The number is five zero eight nine two four five one five five. Again, the number is five zero eight nine four five one five five. Closed captioning should be available through live YouTube streaming for the deaf and hard of hearing. For those who are not able to observe now, this meeting is being recorded and information will be on our board webpage. Ms. Ellis, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer-Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Saron Ruiz?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Mickens-Murray?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Happy to be here.
Dr. Miller?
Present. Our student board member, Saron Ruiz, will lead us in prayer and provide the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Now we will move to the adoption of the agenda for October 28th, 2021 Board Meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moves. What, so move with an amendment?
It has been moved and second to approve the...
I didn't understand you. Oh, I didn't hear you, Mr. Burrows. Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm like to amend the agenda to move item 7.5 draft policy 5122 intrascholastics and extracurricular activity academic requirements to a second reader. Uh, this already passed first reader on June 24th.
So 7.5 draft policy 5122 intercollaps, interscholastic and extracurricular activities, academic requirements are you're asking to be moved to second reader?
Yes, it passed first reader on June 24th.
Okay. Any objections? Then we will amend the October 28th, um, this is agenda to it to change. No, that would be today. Yeah, but, okay. It needs to go under 8.0. Okay, then we're moving 7.5 under 8.0 non-consent agenda.
No, uh, second reader, second reader.
Non-consent second reader, okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Before you approve the agenda, the other thing I'd like to ask is if number 10 says motion to confirm actions taken in executive session on October 28th, could you also add and to confirm the actions taken in appeals that were heard on October 21st?
Oh, okay. To include the appeals. Well, that would be in 2.6, correct?
No, that would just be to confirm.
Oh, okay, okay. 1021 appeals. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, um, it has been moved in second to adopt the agenda for October 28th Board Me, Meeting with the correction or addition or change of 7.5 draft policy 5122 to a non-consent second reader agenda item. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries and the, um, agenda for the October 28th Board Meeting is approved. Anecdote, approval of board meeting minutes for October 14th Board Meeting. May I have a motion?
Second.
It has been second to approve the board meeting min, minutes for October 14th, 2021. Any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposition? The motion carries, the minutes for October 14th, 21, 2021 Board Meeting have been approved. Um, report at the chair. My fellow board members, staff, and members of the public, please join me in a moment of silence in honoring the memory of Rayana Nicole Poston, student at Largo High School. Lottie Carter Harmon, mother of Dr. Pearl Harmon, Director of Operations and Staffing, Human Resources Office. Stephen Strange, custodian, Chelum Elementary School. John Gottfried, data entry clerk, Skyline Elementary School. Teodorico Torres, custodian, Largo High School. Our deepest condolences and prayers to the families on behalf of the Board of Education. Good news. Please join me and my colleagues in congratulating our awesome, dynamic CEO, Dr. Golson, Monica Golson, on receiving an award from the National Center for Children and Families for exceptional superintendent leadership for her 30 years of service to Prince George's County Public Schools. She must have started when she was one. Also, our chief executive officer joined other superintendents across the country to collaborate in writing an article entitled, "Graduation Must Depend on Learning, Not Time." That was featured in publica, in a publication of Education Week. Next, on November 3rd and 17th, the Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group will have their virtual meetings beginning at 3:30 PM, and this will be posted. The Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee will meet via Zoom on Wednesday, November 17th at 5:00 PM. On Thursday, November 18th, we will have a board meeting at 7:00 PM. Only those who have registered for public comment are permitted to attend in person, and we will only have one meeting during the month of November. Next, uh, would be the, we are going into the report of the CEO. Dr. Golson is not with us this evening, but representing her will be Mr. Howard Burnett.
Thank you, Chair Miller, and good evening to Vice Chair and all of our board members, and certainly it's my pleasure to take the opportunity to sit in for our, as you stated, outstanding CEO, Dr. Monica E. Golson, and this probably is after the three and a half or more years, her first, uh, meeting that she has missed that was scheduled. So it's my pleasure to sit in for her. I assured her and comforted her and let her know that all of you would be accommodating to the senior citizen as he sat in for her. So, uh, the remarks for this evening. Last Friday, the Excellence in Education Foundation held its third annual Prince George's County Public Schools Hall of Fame Gala. I extend my heartfelt appreciation to sponsors, partners, staff members, and volunteers for making this year's event a success, the third one. The funds raised through the gala provide scholarships that help many of our students realize their college dreams. Congratulations to our two Award of Excellence Partners and our five 2021 Hall of Fame Alumni Inductees who were recognized for their contributions as community partners, educators, leaders, humanitarians, and athletes. Through the Comprehensive Boundary Initiative, we are striving to best utilize our school facilities to support academic goals and objectives. Part of this effort is to review and recommend changes to current school boundaries. Starting November 2nd, we will host five virtual opportunities, two for Spanish-speaking families, for the community to learn more and share their input on the boundary proposals. For details and to register online, please visit our www.pgcps.org/ boundary, and you can find that on our website. During the pandemic, we have all been focused on preventing the spread of COVID-19. However, many of our students still need the basic vaccines required by the state to attend public school. While the deadline to have all shots for school was extended this year, please be aware that all students must be vaccine compliant by November 12th based on MSD guidelines, or we will have to exclude them from school. Details about requirements and where to get vaccines are available on our website. We have a number of vaccine clinics available to the public. If you haven't already done so, please be sure to complete your application for free and reduced price meals. Although meals for all students are provided free of charge this year, we still need families to complete the applications so we can continue to offer the, uh, the meals as we've provided and to receive the federal funding needed to sustain the program. The deadline to complete applications is October 31st, so please take note of that. The last item, we're currently accepting applications for high school specialty programs, creative and performing arts programs for grades six through eight, and career and technical education. Last night, we hosted the second of two virtual showcases highlighting our specialty programs. On November 3rd, we will host a career and technical education virtual open house. Visit our website to learn more and sign up for the open house. Thank you, Chair Miller. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Now we will move to the final introduction of committee members and committee charge Policy and Governance Committee for the regardless of these potential complaints.
Good evening, colleagues. Uh, it's an honor to serve as Chair of the, as Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee on the committee, as his vice chair is Ms. Rahila Ahmed. We also have Ms. Board Member Judy Mickens-Murray, uh, Board Member, um, Alvaro Saron Ruiz, and also Board Member Sonia Williams. Uh, we meet often, uh, and so please, uh, go online to look at our committee schedule. Our charge is to work on policies that facilitate short and long, long-range strategic planning for the school system, provide oversight of board policy, legislative, and government matters involving federal, state, and county, and municipal agencies and officials. The committee shall ensure that the board governing policies are current and compliant with federal, state, local, county laws, consistent with best practices in public education. In December of each year, the committee shall develop a legislative agenda for the year for the board to consider. The committee shall review proposed federal, state, and county proposed legislation and recommend positions on behalf of the board. The committee shall monitor the development of board policies and associated administrative procedures to ensure effective implementation of approved legislation. By a majority vote, the Board of Education may require the committee to submit a policy proposals for consideration, which we do often. Um, so far this year, we have worked on our basic commitments, um, our intrascholastic and extracurricular activities and academic requirements. Uh, by law, um, we are required to update our nondiscrimination, uh, policy. We're also working on the community schools policy, among a host of other policies. During our July 28th meeting, we looked at student demonstration, student journalism, and school-sponsored media. We also looked at bullying, harassment, intimidation, uh, and we also worked on our parent and community advisory councils and... Uh, moving forward, we have a lot of policies that we, uh, will update. We've separated it into several components, uh, and those components can be found on our board docs. And, uh, Madam Vice Chair, is there anything that I've missed?
No, Mr. Chair, I think you did a great job.
All right, that concludes our committee report. If anyone in the public or anyone on the board would like to attend our committee meetings, you're always welcome. If you have any ideas for policies, please, uh, let me know. I do want to thank the administration, uh, and the board staff. We have a very strong relationship between, uh, members of the administration, our phenomenal po, policy director, uh, and so a lot of the work, um, that goes on is very seamless, and so I want to thank all the people doing the day-to-day work because it makes our job as committee members very easy. So I appreciate the work that you're doing, Policy Director, Mr. Burnett, uh, Ms. Valerie Irvin, Ms. Erica White, Ms., uh, you know, you start naming names, you forget people.
Just say everybody.
Yes, Ms. Walsh, of course, and, uh, everybody. You know, everyone on the CEO's side. I'm thinking of Gail Vangs. I mean, the, the whole, the whole team has been phenomenal to work with, and so on behalf of the committee, uh, we appreciate it and thank you all so much.
I don't know what to do.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Next, we have, uh, seven registered public comments speakers this evening. Note to the public, you have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. All registered speakers will have three minutes to provide comments. At the end of the buzzer, speakers may complete their, that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another speaker or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals, may not address individual or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be terminated. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, CEO, et cetera. Please leave a copy of your statement in the foul box located next to the mic. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation to proceed and move smoothly. When you hear your name called, you may move forward and come to the mic to begin your testimony. Again, you have three minutes to present your remarks. First up is Ms. Michelle Clark, Individual, workload issues.
She's getting me wrong.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you back in person. I know you guys have already received a copy of the task force information and the workload issues that PGCEA has sent over. I'm going to review a couple of those items tonight. I am speaking as an individual, though not on behalf of the organization, but I'm also going to tell you my personal story right now at Kenmore ECC. Teachers are stressed. I have just taken today, my fourth day because of a migraine, this school year. I used to have no more than four a year. It's becoming too much. Every time we turn around, there's something else to do, more paperwork to do. I feel like because of the special ed workload and all the extra paperwork, that I don't really have time to work with my kids, which is my primary responsibility to provide for my children. And that is stressing me out because I know I'm not being the best teacher for them. So far this year, in addition to what we normally would have to do for progress reports, we have been told that we need to complete an assessment. It's called either the Carolina or the Help, the Hawaii Early Learning Inventory. We used to do that once a year prior to their annual reviews. Now we have to do that quarterly and put that information into their progress reports on a quarterly basis. It's a 22-page assessment. It doesn't mean that every student needs every page because every student has different needs and is being serviced in different areas, but the more intense the student is, the more areas you have to complete. It generally takes me at least two to three hours to complete one for an annual review. Now imagine I'm doing that quarterly. That is in addition to the early learning assessment, which our, our three-year-old teachers are going absolutely crazy about right now because they have to do 15 areas, three types of, um, artifacts for each area. So you're talking about 45 pieces of evidence for each student that you have to input online. And that's in addition to the progress reports, in addition to taking care of the children, in addition to everything. And honestly, I feel like my paperwork is occupying almost all of my time, and administration just says, "Oh, you have a small caseload, it shouldn't be an issue." Well, it is. It's a big issue, and you guys need to be aware of the stress you're putting on your teachers because right now people are leaving this profession, and I don't want to be the next one to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Egypt Middleton, Prince George's County Public Schools Bus Transportation.
Good evening, members of the board. I am here to testify today about avoidable failures that have caused me and other parents unnecessary stress and anxiety over something as basic as safely getting our children to school. Yes, there is a driver shortage, but this shortage is made all the worse by poor administrative decisions and failed systems. First, there is no meaningful method for a parent to provide feedback. The wait time after response is submitted through the transportation resolution system or by emailing transport@pgcps.org is too long or not at all. Second, PGCPs attempting, attempt at utilizing the Stop Finder app has been a clear failure. The app is a waste of time and resources. Please invest in a working app or remove the existing one. A broken application is frustrating to parents. Third, the transportation system doesn't communicate proactively or accurately. If something goes wrong, the system expects parents to get information from the call center, which is unreliable, they give conflicting information or inaccurate information, or they keep parent on hold for a long time. We know this can be done. There are existing mass communication systems in the county and the school system that work. When there is inclement weather, there is a system in place to notify parents, so we know it's possible. The lack of transparency has affected my livelihood, caused me time and money, and ruined my ability to plan for the week. I have repeatedly had to leave work in the district to come home, pick up my child, take her to school. I have had to pay for ride shares to bring my child home because the bus was late or did not run. Do I have to assume that PGCPs is completely unreliable when planning for my child's transportation needs? Can PGCPs reimburse me and other parents for the cost of spending money on a ride share? The pandemic is not the cause of these failures. The bus driver shortage, while national news, is not the cause of these failures. If PGC says that this is the reason, we do not accept these excuses. These factors have just revealed flaws in an already broken communication and transportation system. Please make it a priority as the board members to fix this critical part of your oper, operations. This system cannot have the same level of failure and lack of transparency when temperatures are below freezing because then it becomes about more than does just lost time, wages, and peace of mind. Then it becomes a matter of our children's safety. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Shari Flynn, Educator, workload.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, and thank you for this opportunity. I come to you to talk about teacher workload and specifically how the substitute teacher shortage impacts our workload. First, yes, there is a substitute shortage. Why? How many people here would jump at the opportunity to work with dozens of unvaccinated young children or hundreds of possibly vaccinated older children in a confined space during a pandemic for a salary that was a disgrace even before the pandemic? In my school, fortunately, unlike many other schools, all of our teaching positions are staffed, but of course educators still need to be out of school on occasion, and it is very difficult for them to find a substitute. As a result, coverage falls on the staff members who are responsible for interventions for struggling students. All students, but especially struggling students, need regular instruction, but these educators cannot provide that when they have to cover classes. At a time when so many of our students need support with basic skills, we cannot afford to only provide that support sporadically. There's another way that almost all educators are affected by the sub shortage. It's caused the school system to change when we offer the professional development that we all need to improve our practice. I am an alternate school testing coordinator, the co-chair of the Arts Integration Committee, and an ESOL Department Chair. In the latter of these positions, the professional development that is meant to support me comes in the evening. My coursework to learn about the latest best practices in reading comes in the evening. Why in the evening? So many of these opportunities years ago would have been offered during the, the school day, but because of the shortage of substitute teachers, we've made that change. Which department has not made that change? Testing. They know they can't require the trainings in the evening, and testing trainings are mandatory. In 2019, if you'd asked me whether I'd prefer T-trainings during the day or in the evenings, I would have said that I wanted evening opportunities. I resent the time often that trainings take me away from my students, but with several evening meetings per week at times, I have little time to relax and de-stress. This is another way that the current situation has impacted my stress level. A big part of the solution is to incentivize people to become or to return to substitute teaching. What's the best incentive of all? A salary that recognizes that substitute teaching is not easy, a salary that would tell people that we value the work that they do. I ask you to provide a significant raise in substitute teacher salaries, not only for their benefit, but for the benefit of all educators and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stephanie Banila, Mishandling of Positive COVID Results.
Good evening. I'm a parent at Lake Arbor Elementary. I would like the board to address my concerns regarding inadequate communication and unclear SOP. September 30th, I filled out an electronic consent form to allow my child to be randomly tested for COVID. October 14th, my child was tested, I was not notified. It is imperative, parents are aware, whenever any medical tests are performed on their minors. PCR test results take anywhere from 24 to 48 hours to return. I was not made aware of my asymptomatic child's positive test results until six days later. Six days during the second year of a global pandemic. The school board's lackadaisical approach to addressing this egregious mistake is completely unacceptable, which begs the question, are board members familiar with PGCPs core values? Specifically, all staff are, all staff share the responsibilities for a safe and supported school environment, contributing to excellence in education, and continuous improvement in teaching leadership and accountability is the key to our destiny. My family was robbed of the opportunity to be responsible members of this community. I had to miss five shifts at work, three, three class sessions. I had to miss five shifts at work, three class sessions at Montgomery College because my toddler could not attend daycare. The aftercare program my second grader attends had to shut down for two weeks. And the most concerning detail is the prolonged exposure to this deadly disease my diabetic cancer-surviving 70-year-old father-in-law was subjected to. Those are the details of how this ordeal affected my family. Now multiply those details by 20 because the entire second grade class had to switch to virtual learning, all because crucial information was not properly communicated to me. Last week, I left over 10 messages for the CEO, Associate Superintendent, District 6 Board Member, and Area 1 Instructional Director. I did not hear back from the board specifically until Monday of this week, after I registered to give testimony to tonight's meeting. Now, I have addressed my concerns directly with Scion Diagnostics regarding their role in this potentially deadly oversight. Now I ask for the same transparency from the school board. I would like to see the written step-by-step process on how students are randomly selected and how results are reported to whom and in which order by the close of business Friday, October 29, 2021. By November 8th, I would like to meet with the Associate Superintendent, District 6 Board Member, the Strategic Initiative Officer, to review the gaps in the process identified and to discuss what resolutions have been made to ensure something like this never happens again. Not just for my child, not just for the families at Lake Arbor, but to any pupil in the PGCPs school system. I look forward to collaborating with PGCPs on this matter of public health and safety. I hope to see in action the school board's commitment to upholding core values so they're not just some words posted on a website. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Desiree Berryhill, Academic Achievement. Is Ms. Berryhill here? Okay, we also have written testimony from community members that have been posted on board docs. Please review this testimony at your convenience. And one of the persons signed up for tonight to talk about teacher workload, sent in a message indicating that her testimony will be in writing. So it will appear on board docs once we receive it, and that's Ms. Amity Pope. Next, we will move into a discussion item by Board Member Queen. Please introduce item 4.1 under the Operating Budget Board Priority Recommendations.
Thank you so very much. Let's see, discussion 4.1 is the FY 2023 Operation Budget Board Priority Recommendation. Can we get Ms. Berkeley to bring it up? As she's bringing it up, I just want to say this is the results from the board members who actually submitted their priorities. In September of this year, we sent out, we put a survey out for members of the public, members of the staff and the community members to be able to send in their priorities for the FY 2023. We did get almost 1,700 people who had priorities for our budget committee. We broke it down as far as each district so the board members can know what was important to the voters in their district and their community. We did post it on the website. You can probably still go back and see that. And from this, the board members were asked to submit their priorities, and I would hope that each and every one of my board members met the priorities of their constituents from the survey. You can also go see the board members' priorities also from each of your district. From the board members' priority, when we had our budget committee meeting, and I thank my vice chair, vice chair, Mr. Harris over there, what we did is try to combine the priorities because a lot of our priorities were the same priorities. We were asking for some of the same thing. And the combination of the combined priorities you can actually see, which is right there on the boards. Mr. Harris, you guys know, can you go ahead and take it from here and read that? Because I'm all the way over there. I can still not see that that clearly.
Yeah, sure thing. Board Member Queen. So we broke it down to our top six collective board budget priorities. First, you'll see funding for focus work group goals. And you'll see expanding expanding slash improving curriculum and instructions to include increased personnel, professional development and continued education, support, mental health supports and resources, smaller class sizes, and after-school clubs, activities, and mentoring programs.
Thank you so very much. And this is from each and every board member priorities. And if you see, it's kind of leave room for a lot of things. And I'll, I mean, I'll just use one of the priorities for me as District 6. When I went back and I look at the priorities of the community members of my district of District 6, some of the priorities that they had requested. And I was trying to meet each and every one, and I would hope that each of my colleagues did the same when they were concerned about maintenance. Maintenance has been a big issue of mine's improvements in the school. When they were concerned about hiring of teachers, you can see this priority is in their smaller class sizes. Of course, technology and enhancement of support. So we, and that was just my, you know, the set from my constituent. But if I went to each and every board member constituent, you can see that we, as a board, tried to meet each of the needs that were brought back to us from our constituents. And we tried to compile it into this budget priority, which we will be referring to our CEO to let him know this is the priority that we have as a board, but it's also the priority that our community and our constituents and our staff have. And so that's the introduction of the priority of the board, and it's open for any discussion for all the board members.
Is there any discussion? Questions? No discussion. Thank you, Board Member Queen and Board Member Harris for your reports. Now we will move to the consent agenda. Mr. Howard Burnett, would you please introduce items 5.1 through 5.4?
Yes, thank you, Chair Miller. Items 5.1 through 5.4 requires board approval of the proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools: National School Psychology Week, Maryland Emancipation Day, American Education Week, and Observation of National Native American History Month.
Any comments? May I get a motion? It has been moved in second to vote on, to accept this consent agenda. Any discussion? No discussion. Call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposition? The motion carries. Next, we will go to, that was easy. The Budget Consent Agenda. Mr. Burnett, please introduce items 6.1 through 6.7.
Yes, thank you, Chair Miller. And before I read them and recommend board approval, I would like to take the opportunity to pull item 6.6, William Smith Outdoor Education Center, and bring that back to the board for approval after we do a few reviews on that particular item. So I am recommending approval of items 6.1 through 6.5 and also 6.7. And that includes the work done at Deerfield Run Elementary School, Forest Heights Elementary School, James E. Duckworth, Lewisdale Elementary School, Marlton Elementary School, Oxon Hill, Bonne Mill, Chilum, and Riverdale Elementary Schools. And fee, the one item pulled is item 6.6.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve this budget consent item, items, these items? I can't hear you. Put your mic.
I move that we approve the budget consent items.
Going to name them all of them, or he just naming some? Because he pulled some.
He only pulled the one.
So you're going to name the ones you're making a motion?
Well, we'll just call the numbers.
I'll second the ones that he just called.
Yeah, the numbers.
It is 6.1 through 6.5 and 6.7. 6.6 was removed. All in favor? Any opposition? The motion carries to accept 6.1 through 6.5 and item 6.7 for the budget consent agenda. 6.6 was removed. New business. Mr. Burnett, please, on the first reader.
Yes, new business for first readers. Include items 7.1 through 7.4. 7.1, school uniforms. 7.2, community schools. 7.3, basic commitments. And 7.4, non-discrimination. And you moved 7.5 to a second reader.
Second reader, yeah.
Thank you.
Any comments? May I have a motion?
Second.
It has been moved in second to accept policy drafts 0114, school uniforms. 7.2, policy 1100, community schools. 7.3, draft policy 0118, basic commitments. 7.4, draft policy 0125, non-discrimination. All in favor? Any opposition? Items 7.1 through 7.4 have been approved for first reader. Now we will move to 8.1, the non-consent agenda, second reader. And Mr. Burrows will present that policy.
Good evening, colleagues. Here we go. Colleagues, on July 28th, the Board of Education approved unanimously Board Policy 5122, Interscholastic and Extracurricular Activities. When it came time to second reader, the CEO had some reservations and concerns, particularly around eliminating, or not eliminating, but there were some concerns about the 2.0 requirement. The board at that time remanded it back to committee and instructed the committee to work with the administration on a compromise that would accomplish the goals of the policy while relieving the concerns of the administration as relates to COMAR. And we did that. And so the amendment was essentially that we kept the great, just for the public's edification. A few months ago, well, several months ago, I went to the superintendent and I, and to my colleagues, and I authored a policy that would have originally removed the 2.0 requirement in order to play activities. And I was going to replace it with attendance because I saw so many young people in juvenile court who were motivated by sports and activities. And the moment they fell below 2.0, they would become not eligible to play. They would disconnect from the school, and they would go out into the community and then end up getting in trouble and coming to juvenile court. The thought was that we need to ensure that our most vulnerable children are with us in school in the presence of a loving, caring adult as much as possible. And so that was the initial, you know, policy aim. How do we take our most vulnerable students and keep them connected to the school even when they fall short of the GPA requirement? I met with a group of principals at the CEO's request. I also met with a group of coaches. And I've spoken to a number of board members. It was never the intent to lower the standard, and I understood that concern. And I believe that this amendment that the committee has passed unanimously and that has the agreement of the superintendent is a win-win. Essentially, what we will do is say that if a student falls below 2.0, we will give them a 20-day academic probationary period. And during that time, they are not allowed to play in games because that'll, some of the games, you have to pull students out of class to go and travel, and so we want them in class. So they're not allowed to play in games, but they are still connected to the team. They can still go to the practices, the mandatory study halls. There's also language in here that really gets to the root of this. And that is that during the probationary period, the student will enroll and participate in academic enrichment programs designed to help improve their academic performance. And so as the student, once the student reaches an ineligible period, for those 20 days and maybe even longer, depending on the school, the principal, and that student, they're going to engage in rigorous academic enrichment, which could be study hall, tutoring, you know, whatever the school can come up with for that student, with hopes that at the end of that 20-day academic probationary period, the student will have improved and be able to play again and participate in their club or activity. The whole point of this, colleagues, is to keep our most vulnerable students connected to the school. And so this probationary period allows that. I want to thank so many of our colleagues across the board. We agree that we want Prince George's County Public Schools to lead the nation in dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline, which means that we might have to do things a little differently than we've done before. These students, it's so imperative that we keep them connected to the school and that when they fall short, we don't X them out, but we bring them in even closer. And this is what this bridge period would do. And so on behalf of the committee, I move that we approve this. Thank you.
Any discussion? Board Member Williams? Oh, take the vote. Motion. He made the motion. And you second? Oh, is there a second? Mickens-Murray's second. Okay. Board Member Williams for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Burrows, for pulling together this, the policy change. I can understand the intent of what you're trying to accomplish with the policy change. But as we discussed in the policy committee, I believe you can accomplish the same thing that you're trying to accomplish to have our administrative procedures revised so that it can be clear as to what you'd like the staff members to do because I believe a lot of these things are already being tackled through the coaches, through the schools themselves, and the support for students that are not doing well in general. And so I believe that what needs to happen is that there be a revision to the administrative procedure to direct our school staff so that there is more consistency in how things are happening within the school building. There are many, as you mentioned, there are many inconsistencies. Some coaches do some things that other coaches aren't doing. Some coaches are using their own money to support some of the things that they're doing to support students. And as we discussed, there just doesn't appear to be something consistent. So the policy change may be a stretch to try to accomplish what you want to accomplish on an immediate basis. I think that there needs to be a revision to the administrative procedure on the interscholastic and extracurricular activities. Thank you. So I will be voting now.
Any further, oh, Board Member Ballantyne.
Thank you, and I appreciate my board, my board member and my board colleague, Mr. Burrows. I think this hits close to home. I had a conversation with my son Curtis just a couple of days ago, and I told him he did not do his homework, so he could not go to practice. And I said, "School comes first." Then I said, "Tell it back to me again." And he said, "Dad, school comes first." And so this definitely hits home as my child is an athlete in the middle school program. I definitely appreciate my colleagues' intention, one, to ensure that our students are connected to sports. I appreciate your position as someone who works directly with our juveniles and are hearing directly from them. And so those testimonies matter. I also appreciate that you engage with our coaches. I made a point, the first thing when I joined the board is I made a jacket. I made a point, my first thing when I joined the board is I made a jacket made so I can go to the football games and cheer on our students. And then, when I went to other districts, to make sure I cheer even louder, to know that what Prince George's represents. I also appreciate your recommendations, the community recommendations, I want to put it all on you, the community recommendations around particularly supporting students with extra enrichment. And so, I'm in support of this motion, most importantly because of the process in which you went about going through this. You proposed it, you brought it to this board, there was some disagreement, there was some pushback, you took it back, and you came back. That's how it works. And I would hope that we will continue to do that. I know our committee does. I'm looking at my committee chair. That's how we do too. There's no competition. I'm just saying. But I appreciate it, and I'll be voting in favor.
Any other comments? Discuss, any further discussion? I have to get used to the lights. Board Member Ahmed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Burrows, I wanted to thank you for bringing forward this policy change. I will be voting in support of it, and I urge colleagues to also vote in support of it. At the essence, what I feel that this policy does is make a statement, a strong statement, that we are here to educate children holistically, and we have a responsibility to make sure that we're looking at learning, yes, that is very important, but also all the different components that help build a child to be a high-functioning person in society post-graduation. And so, for those reasons, I'm very thankful that you're bringing this forward. I think it's very aligned with other work that we're trying to do on the board to make sure that we are supporting students. We just got off a presentation in which we all, in which the budget committee brought forward very important things to build on that concept of holistic learning and providing mental health supports to students and making sure that we're budgeting and putting our money around after-school activities. So, for me, this is all part of, this is a part of the larger piece that we're trying to accomplish here as a board and making sure that we're looking at academic learning, but also all the other components that make it, that allow us to change the future through our generations of students that we're teaching here. So, I just wanted to thank you and I encourage other folks to also support this policy as well.
Board Member Queen?
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. Ahmed, I'm torn on this policy for two reasons. And first of all, I believe it's a good policy, and I'm going to support it because I know it is. And, you know, I say this all the time, you guys, our students, scholars can be the best scholars they can be. I, you know, I applaud you, Mr. Ballantyne, Board Member Ballantyne, for being able to be that father, to being able to be a part of Men Make a Difference. But we don't have too many fathers like that, and it's not all over the community. Everybody don't have that in their home, and we must remember that. To some of our scholars, we got scholars who are single parents, we got homeless, we got some living with grandparents, and they're trying to do their best they can do. And sometime, doing the best they can do is putting their effort into their sports, and that's all they have. And how dare we take away from what we have? I keep asking you all as board members to think outside the box. Put yourself in other people's shoes. It would be nice if we all lived in a greenhouse and had that perfect scholar of a parent or a mother and father doing well off like you guys, but that's not realistic. It's not happening in my household, I can tell you. And it's not happening in a lot of people households, especially the 132,000 students we represent. We're talking about Prince George's County, a school that over 60% of our students are on free every due lunch, a county where African-American and Spanish students are hurting, are hurting. So, when we make decisions, let's not, let it be about us, but let's be, let it be about putting our kids first.
Thank you. No further comments? Call for the vote? Roll call. Mr. Nussbaum? I have the staff. Ms. Ellis, I apologize. I thought you had gotten that vote.
Mrs. Adamstaff?
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Booths-Strather?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mr. Serone Ruiz?
Absolutely.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mrs. Mickens-Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I abstain.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Dr. Miller?
Oh, aye.
One no, one abstention, and 12 yeses.
Motion, the motion carries. Thank you, board members. Now, we will move to... No, I'm going to 9.0. I'm going here.
We apologize for the interruption. We have to return to item 4.1, which is the budget priorities, the board budget priorities, to vote, to send those forward to the CEO to include in her operating budget. With the report from the budget committee, we just need to have a second to move those items forward to the CEO, and then we'll take a vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? This item will be moved forward to the CEO to include in the operating budget. Thank you.
Now, we will move to confirm the, we will move to confirm the actions taken in executive session on October 21st, 2021 on appeals. May I have a motion?
I move that we accept the actions taken in the appeal hearing held on October 21st.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? The motion carries.
Madam Chair, I abstain.
Oh, you abstain, okay. And one abstention. Thank you.
That's two abstentions.
The, roll call.
Mrs. Adamstaff? Mrs. Ahmed?
Abstain.
Ms. Booths-Strather?
Abstain.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Serone Ruiz?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mickens-Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen? Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
The motion carries to confirm the actions taken in executive session on October 21st, 2021 in reference to the appeals. And Mr. Nussbaum, we'll send that information forward. Next will be to go back and approve the actions taken in executive session on today. Now, because we are going back into executive session after this public session, I'm just going to ask for us to take a motion on those items that we did cover so that we can approve these actions taken in executive session.
So moved.
Did someone say something?
My apologies. I thought you were completed, and I said, "So moved."
All right, Board Member Ahmed?
No, that's fine. I was just moving to approve the actions taken in executive session up to this point, as you were saying.
Okay, well, is there, you second, correct?
I made the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So, it's moved, it has been moved to second that we approve the actions taken in the executive session on October 28th as follows: to receive a report from the CEO regarding the administration of the school system; to discuss personnel matters regarding the appointment, employment, and removal of certain employees; decide appeals and receive legal advice about appeals and constituent concern; to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on legal matters; to discuss an investigative proceeding or actual or possible criminal conduct; to discuss requests for a proposal for legal services. No, I'll take that one out. We didn't get to that. So, with the exception of that, those that I read, can I, I have a motion on the floor. Roll call, Ms. Ellis, please.
Mrs. Adamstaff? Mrs. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Booths-Strather?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows? Mr. Serone Ruiz?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mrs. Mickens-Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen? Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye. Motion carries to confirm the actions taken in the executive session on October 28th as read. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn this public meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second? It has been moved in second to adjourn this public meeting. Any discussion? And we will be going back into executive session. But I was going to take, do it separately. I have two, seven. Board Member Ahmed?
Yes, I was just going to put a substitute motion on the floor, move, and that substitute motion is, motion to reconvene in executive session.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved to reconvene into executive session. All in favor? Any opposition? The motion carries. And this concludes our public meeting, although we didn't take the vote to adjourn. Okay, okay. This concludes the public meeting at this point in time, and we will move into executive session.